Well.
Yeah, I'm getting audio. We'll see what happens. Yeah, we'll see what happens.
Did you hear anything?
We need five.
We're getting audio.
I guess we're getting, okay.
Okay.
Okay, yeah.
All right. Good evening. This is a good evening. My pleasure. I'm still there local. I'm still the chairman of the community. My knowledge now. Welcome here tonight. We think we've got a interesting presentation. We've been doing a lot of work on broadband. As many of you know, down in Red. And I'd like to introduce Jeanne Vogel. She was chairman for the Communications and Technology Group. She's going to take you through our presentation about fifteen to twenty minutes. We would ask that you hold your questions if you can. We'll have plenty of time given how many people are here tonight. Try and answer everybody's question. And with that, I will turn it over to Jeanne. Thank you again for coming.
I don't think I'm working.
We're working.
We're working.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can you hear me? Great. Yes, I am Jeanne Vogel. I am the chairperson of the Communications and Technology Committee. And welcome to our meeting. Thank you so much for coming tonight. So, um, in our efforts to explore broadband expansion and options for the town, I will summarize a brief history of actions which were turned in. Now, this is a morning.
Clicker here.
Yep.
Okay, great.
I will summarize a brief history of the actions that are done in town and talk about detailed work in twenty-two. The line options issued a request for proposal and identifying a candidate ISP that we will recommend to the board at their next meeting. So, our broadband expansion journey. Meaning the better broadband was highlighted in two thousand and nineteen during the ten-year comprehensive plan resident feedback session. Between twenty twenty and twenty twenty-two, the town made two attempts of expanding access and both efforts failed due to the inability to obtain grants. The addition of substantial federal funding for broadband expansion in the infrastructure bill and the creation of a broadband coordinator role in the county was help, has helped us accelerate the efforts in twenty twenty-two. Lastly, but most importantly, our experience during the pandemic galvanized the notion that broadband is not a nice to have, but rather, like electricity, it's a critical utility that is needed by everyone. At the committee. If you'll give a little wave committee when I say your name, that'll be great.
Jeanne. I've got a little sensor on my mic.
Is that better?
No.
I don't think it's on.
I honestly don't think it's on. Okay, not working? Can you hear me now? Oh, one of those. Can you hear her now? I asked if he says this loud, right?
Yep.
Okay. I will do that.
Is it red down there?
Yes.
That's on. That's on.
Yes. They're all shaking their head. I'll give it a second.
Swap mics. I know. Hey. Tell him to kill his mic.
Can you kill your mic?
Kill your mic.
Is that working? Talk, get it.
Can I come from there, Jeanne?
Hot, hot, hot. Yep.
Nope.
Nope.
People are labeled.
Okay. I'll try to turn up the volume. Can you hear me now? Yeah, I'll try. Use your mom voice, Jeanne. I have to remember that one since we've been around. So, Steve Jenkins may be with us tonight. But Paul Kestrel, Derek Denise, and Paul Whitman have served on our committee. Our committee was supported by Jess Hatch, the Door County Broadband Coordinator, and County of Doors Broadband Coordinator. Pardon me. And Hugh Zettel, the chairperson of the County Broadband Committee and the Savannah County Supervisor. Still with me? So, our committee process. Okay, let me forget this if you're right. I'll just try to project. So, the town reviewed the Finley Engineering Report, which provided extensive information on broadband coverage in the town, technology and construction information, and cost projections. A town survey was done in early twenty twenty-two, mailed to twenty-one hundred and sixty-five addresses with thirty-two percent participation. We joined the countywide five-minute Door County survey. Participation was of thirty-five percent. In July twenty-two, we held separate in-person interviews with AT&amp;T, Bertram, Charter, and Ensite. Followed these interviews with a request for information and formalized more specific needs and a request for proposal with more specifications which would lead to an agreement. Of the seven ISPs contacted, four responded to the RFP, the Request for Proposal. The committee held over twenty meetings and has done a thorough analysis of what we learned from our resident feedback. From the survey, we learned that seventy-two percent of respondents are either unserved or underserved, meaning they were unable to reliably have twenty-five megabits download and three megabits per second upload. As you can see on the chart, these ISPs serving our community do not deliver on their advertised speeds. The comments under number three reflect what our community experienced during the pandemic. Children and families were greatly impacted trying to work remotely and use work and learn remotely. Many people found it difficult to near impossible to work from home. Some residents stated that they needed to drive to Surgeon Bay for better service. The ISP selection criteria, coverage. This committee wanted to ensure coverage for the entire town, coast to coast and everything in between, to ensure a reduced rate for low-income folks and a plan for our part-time seasonal residence impacts, cost impact. We wanted to be sure the overall cost of the project would cover all our needs and minimize costs such as tax levy, also minimize impact of installation costs and subscriber rates. Future proof. Using the Finley Report, we would look at the design, buried versus aerial. We also wanted to be assured that the design would enable future technology solutions. Partner viability. The committee wanted to be assured that the ISP had the capability and experience in rural community, that they would have customer support and educational services through the transition process. The top two ISP candidates, as you can see, are Bertram and Bugtussel. The committee will recommend Bugtussel to the town board. Assessment of Bugtussel. Bugtussel will cover the entire town. They offer support and programs we stressed, as in low-income program through the federal ACP. It was also a plus that Bugtussel would begin work by mid-two thousand and twenty-three. Yes, in your lifetime, Doug. The overall project cost of six point eight-two million, including design and engineering, was the most favorable of the ISPs considered. Bugtussel innovative financing model that results in no tax levy. The only municipality that has that type of financing solution. They offer competitive rates of three hundred megabits per second, symmetrical speeds, and at a cost of sixty-two dollars per month. Providing buried fiber will offer increased reliability with fiber to the premises design. Bugtussel will provide additional fiber for future town needs and multi-conduit to enable other partners to deploy in the town cost effectively. Viable partner. BT has been a rural-focused broadband provider since two thousand and three with fiber and fixed wireless projects in fourteen Wisconsin counties. They are a top-tier supplier to AT&amp;T, installing and servicing cellular towers and related fiber infrastructure in Iowa, Wisconsin, and Michigan. Bugtussel has received twenty Public Service Commission awards in the last three years. A proven success. What's the Bugtussel offering for residents? Symmetrical speeds of three hundred megabits per second, additional levels going to one gig. Bugtussel is participating provider for the Affordable Connectivity Program. For those that qualify, thirty dollars per month goes toward their internet subscription. Bugtussel provides two options for seasonal residents. The first two hundred feet of fiber from the road to your home is free with a two-dollar per foot charge thereafter. To help manage your digital transition, they offer Bugtussel University, a university that's free. We have all experienced call center difficulties located in countries outside the United States. Good news. Bugtussel has their call center in Green Bay with English and Spanish-speaking staff. The target rate shows that by switching from your current provider to Bugtussel, depending on your provider, your yearly savings could range from a hundred and fifty-five dollars to sixteen hundred and fifty-five dollars. Through an exhaustive process to evaluate broadband solutions for all residents, identifying a rural-focused provider, a future-proof design at a favorable project cost without the burden of a tax levy on residents. That's what we, I think, meant successfully. So. We're already at questions. So, what we're going to ask is that you state your name and your address before asking the question. Okay, there. Laddie, how are you handling? Is just trying to speak loudly?
Just speak and I'll pick up this, I can.
Okay, great. So, open to the, to questions. Sure. Tom.
Tom Pollack, Whitefish Bay Road. Is this, I couldn't read the slide. Was this internet-only? Internet access only?
It's fiber to the premises.
Yeah, for internet-only access.
Well, yeah.
It's not television.
Yes. It's internet, I guess, that would be said, yes.
You can stream anything.
You can stream anything, though.
Second question is, where are they going? Where are they burying the trunk lines, for example, on Whitefish Bay Road?
Okay, well, you're getting, you're getting into design issue that, you know, we've seen, you know, we've, the committee has seen, what would you say?
Yes.
Well, like.
They've done, they've done a preliminary design with this going along most of the road line, whether it's Whitefish Bay, Bay Shore Drive, all the major both county and town roads in order to connect all the residents. Okay, so within the setbacks, it's going to be within the road and the setbacks? Yes, they typically stay within, within the right-of-way. And the only time they'll be on, on a resident's properties is with their permission to basically run the drop, basically from the, from the road to the. The first two hundred feet includes coming underneath a road like Whitefish Bay Road. Does that actually? Um, that's a good question. No, I, I couldn't have it. I don't have an aspirin now. But it's basically from Northern District line is to that.
Joe Suki, South Cave Point Drive. Right now, we have Spectrum Cable which services our internet. They're very fond of increasing the price regularly. How solid is the sixty-two dollars a month before the price raises on that? Do we have a feel for that?
I'd say we, I can't say that they won't raise the price, but this is the price that's on their website and they also quoted that too.
Does this company frequently raise prices? Do we know that?
Can you speak to that?
Yes, their, their history is they're, they're pretty consistent with, they're pretty consistent with their pricing, staying solid. And again, one of the things that drew our committee or drew the committee to Bugtussel is that they're very rural-focused. So, they understand, you know, the, you know, the, the cost of a dollar. And if you look at their price compared to others in the marketplace, you know, has some fairly competitive rates. You've got Insight, which is about sixty-four ninety-five if you take out their promotional rate for Town of Aliens Harbor. AT&amp;T Fiber in town is sixty for the equivalent, three hundred, three hundred, symmetrical. And then, of course, you got, you know, traffic spectrum that now close to eighty dollars for, for three hundred and ten. So, they're, they're competitive and I agree with that competition. You know, there's typically a tendency to, to keep some price stability.
Uh-huh. So, everybody who, who gets this will, will in fact have fiber. You're not going to leverage off the cable that exists already?
No.
No. No. God, no.
No.
All right.
Got it, yeah.
Thank you.
Yes.
So, Denise Chandler, fifty-two eighty-three South Lake Road. So, is the design all buried fiber? Or are they doing any overhead?
No, it's all buried.
Okay, and what kind of consumption assumptions are they making to give you that price? In other words, is there some percentage of the population that needs to sign on for this in order for that price to be good? Or is that price good if only ten people sign on?
We did, we did not ask, we did not, they did not say that. They just, they have a formula. Okay, they've been doing this a long, long time. So, they have what they call a take rate. So, so they, they assume by the number of locations, they're going to have a certain take and they don't seem to have any issue. You know, and one thing that you notice, what we talked about, was that they've, they've served counties, okay? I think, you know, there's been towns within counties, obviously. But just for them to come and serve a county, when I, I didn't approach them originally because I just didn't think that they would have an interest in us because we're a town, not a county, okay? So, um, but they did, you know? We had a conversation and they said, oh, no, absolutely, well, 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 we'd love to have your RFP. Um, and so, so they, by doing this, they, I mean, they've been doing this enough and having covered fourteen counties in Wisconsin. They know how, they know how it works. They know their business model and other business.
So, in their RFP response, there were no caveats to that price?
No, not at all.
It was their guarantee.
No.
Okay.
And I'll add one more thing. It's not just fiber that they're laying. They're laying, they're laying fiber infrastructure throughout, throughout that. So, there are typically other providers, right? You know, we've had, we know we have somewhat lousy cell coverage, right? Because it was cost prohibitive for them to put towers in and put the fiber infrastructure in. And if you're going to do anything but laying cellular towers today, you have to lay fiber because you have to be ready to do 5G. So, you have to have the capacity for that newer technology. So, by them laying this infrastructure, they're basically making it very easy for an AT&amp;T, US Cellular, or whomever to come in and put up towers because they reduce that burden. So, that's another revenue stream for them that, you know, is in addition to what they get for subscription services that they sell to residents and businesses.
And did they give you any sort of rollout plan? In other words, as they, you know, implement this, there's certain areas they're going to serve.
Or are they going to start?
Yeah.
No.
We have, yeah, no indication, but they have a, they have a very strong method through their madness because of how they've deployed this in rural, in rural counties. And they have a very good methodology for how they notify the sections of the communities as they start the rollout process.
You might like mention one of the pieces, which is they've been extremely successful in getting grants from the Public Service Commission. And we will be applying for grants as part of that. And the requirements of the grants is that both projects are completed within twenty-four months. These people are literally shovel-ready to start as soon as we can move ahead with the paperwork, et cetera.
And actually, they, they indicated that they would be done sooner than two years.
So.
Yes.
Greg Shucker, South Lake Road. With respect to the fiber coming in, is buried up to the point where it reaches your property? Now, there's a trunk there, a connection point. Is that also buried? And is, is it buried all the way up to your home then?
Yes.
Yes.
Do they need responsibility for trenching that? Is that someone else?
They trench that.
They do everything.
They may have another, you know, they may have an affiliated company that does that. Remember, that's often happens with, with these.
Is the converter from, from light to electronics, is that on the outside of the house or is that on the inside of the house?
Do you remember that?
Uh, it's called an optical line terminal and that is on the inside of the house.
Okay.
Yes, and it is, it is fiber all the way through and they'll bore underneath. As a matter of fact, because of all the infrastructure work they're doing in counties as well as the work they're doing as a supplier for AT&amp;T, they bought their own trenching company within the last six months. So, they've got, you know, they've got enough work to keep them busy and they basically, you know, bought more equipment on their own to kind of expedite the installation process.
And they've also purchased, what does it tell us? Eleven thousand miles of fiber?
Yeah, this year, they purchased eleven thousand miles of fiber.
Yeah.
Robert Thompson, forty-six twenty-two Bridge Crest Road. One of the county has very, very shallow soil. Where I'm at, we're lucky we can get sixty-eight inches. Will the trenching equipment be able to handle the dull might we have here?
It's going to cut through on rock, yes.
They're, they're doing installations where they're cutting through granite in the central part of the state.
No problem. Yes, Doug?
Doug Anderson, fifty-four oh-one Bay Shore Drive. And yes, you, it's in slashable. Fifty-five hundred is where it stops. For those of us who have heavily wooded lots, how much space does this trenching have to take? Or can it go, can it go along the edge of the driveway or?
Yes, trenching is kind of a misnomer. Most of that they'll do, they'll go underground. They'll drill. They'll bore.
Bore underground.
Okay, so as much as possible, they do that to, to reduce, you know, impacts for, for, for trees and, and those sorts of things as much as they can.
And then put your lawn back together.
We're all tree huggers, right?
The other question is if you have, like, two properties that, that dwellings are fairly close together, would, would they trench one line in that would share? Or would that degrade the, the, the speed?
No, it, it, it won't degrade the speed of the fiber by any, by any stretch. And I think it's, as they do resident-by-resident surveys, they'll, they'll work you to determine the best way, you know, to do that to meet your performance.
It sounds like they, they're really good at communication, so.
Jess McLever, Whitefish Bay Road. Who's going to issue the bonds? And how do you generate debt service and payback on the bonds?
Okay, we actually have a slide for that. Can you imagine? We're prepared for that one. Thank you for asking.
But there's an offer in the well, or?
Check in the mail, I hope.
And my friend Hugh is going to speak to that. Oops, what happened to the way?
Yeah, he just flipped them.
I was there, but something happened.
Yeah, folks kind of ask when we say that there's no tax levy. They say, well, it's too good to be true.
Yeah. As a matter of fact, you and I thought that would be the first right.
And after I'm going to talk about this, I'm going to give a lecture on cold fusion because it's closely related.
That's why he used to be.
You know, I, I think the thing is bonding has been used by municipalities for all sorts of projects, right? If you think of apartments, right? The, a city needs a, needs a housing. They build apartments. They find a developer to do it. And that developer pays off the bonds by basically charging rent, okay? In, in this model, it's, it's basically the same thing. We issue, will issue bonds as, as the issuer. Bugtussel has, had done this process starting in two thousand and twelve with the county, with Fond du Lac County. Fond du Lac County had the challenge where they couldn't, they couldn't find any willing ISP to put broadband in their rural areas. It was very frustrating for them. So, what they did is they, you know, full, the full faith and lending capability of a county, you know, and their ability to raise taxes if they need to, they partnered with Bugtussel to issue bonds in, in Fond du Lac County. And other counties have used that model. So, they, they work together with investment banks, USB, US Bank, and Baird are kind of the three main lending institutions along with their, their bonding attorneys to basically set up the issuance. They'll issue the bonds. They'll give the town or the municipality a lien on all their, on the assets until the bonds are, are paid off. They have a backstop, you know, a one-year reserve to make sure they can keep making their, their monthly payments. On top of that, their, their parent under Gilbert Communications also has funds to make sure that they can, that make their payments as well. But as, as Jeanne noted, they know what they need for a subscription rate in order to make that monthly payment to pay back the bonds. And in the eleven, twelve years that they've been doing this with the other counties in the state, they, they've not, they've not missed a payment. So, that's, that's kind of how they're, they're structured to help us out.
So, the bond ratio is in the name of the town?
No, the bond, it's going to be Hilbert.
Well, maybe it, it might be in the name of the town, depending on.
Depending on how they structure it.
Is it?
But they have a, they have a.
To get a tax rate.
Yeah, but they had some traditional Hilbert Communications A, B, C, and they, you know, had some strings relative to, so the bond issuers know, you know, the, the entity's, you know, continuation of their work.
But the, but then the revenue stream to pay back the bond is to come from Bugtussel operations.
Yes, 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 yeah, they, yeah, they basically pay off the bond.
Thirty years. Jim?
I'm Jim Metcalf, forty-one fifty-nine Bay Shore Drive. First, I want to congratulate and thank the committee. I was on for a while, but then I couldn't do that anymore. Now, you do a lot of work.
Yep, Tim is a trampoline, Jim.
Yeah. I'm a trampolineist, if we can be fair to the community. Also, beside being a full-time resident, I am the president of the Bay Shore Property Owners Association. And I'll be very pleased to tell the association, who most of us have spectrum. I'm paying eighty-five dollars a month. And I tested this afternoon. I was, I was getting two ninety-three down and ten up or twelve up. So, looking forward to being able to improve my coverage or improve my, my bit rate and, and even less. But I do have to say, it looks too good to be true.
We get that.
And I'm old utility guy, so it's too good to be true. Hard work is, and I know you've done a lot of hard work. But for instance, in the bond, if the revenue stream doesn't work out, what happens? Are you, does the town's basketball stuck with a partially built system? What are, I'm sure you've thought about this because I know, think some of those things. What are the downsides and what are the risks that the town is taking on? And thank you. Yep.
I think first of all, there, it's going to be a complete project, right? So, as with any municipal undertaking of this sort, whether it's us or whether it's something where we have a tax levy, you'll hear the term callbacks where most communities, you know, have the ability to, you know, to grab the assets if there's underperformance or non-performance. And those will be things that we'll do as part of our agreements, you know, with Bugtussel to protect the town. As I talked about, there's a couple of other backstops relative to financial, you know, doing risk reduction, you know, with, with basically them having a year's worth of, of fees that they hold in reserve, not the town. And on top of that, their, their parent underneath also is, is on the hook for, for paying. And then they have one more layer behind that, which are the investors that have invested in Bugtussel, which are, you know, some, some prominent multimillionaires that are literally from Gilbert, Wisconsin. So, they're, they're folks of world. They believe in what they're doing and their business model. As Jeanne said, they want to come in and say, yeah, we can do this because for, for their business integrity and, and viability as they expand throughout the, you know, many other parts of the state, they want to have a model that works and. many other parts of the state, they want to have a model that works and a business that's sustainable. So if it, if it comes down to it, right, then it may come down to the town owning assets, which is a low risk. Again, their performance today in the other counties show, you know, that they can meet their obligations.
I have a follow-up to that. Maybe it's curiosity, maybe it's relevancy, I'm not sure. But somewhere, I have a few neurons firing that Buck Tussell made a presentation in this room.
In 2020, they did.
Two years ago.
2020, yeah.
And it was nothing, they didn't present themselves anything like what you're saying here. They were a.
Fixed wireless.
Yeah, fixed wireless.
Company.
Right.
Have they, did we just not ask the right questions at the time? Or has the nature of their business and their capitalization increased tremendously? Because I would not have expected Buck Tussell to say things like this two years ago.
Well, they did two years ago. They were, they were more focused on fixed wireless.
Two years ago, they were, and they didn't come across as the powerhouse that you're describing here.
I think, I think a couple of things. One is from an environment perspective, kind of sort of pre-COVID. And post-COVID, there's an avalanche of money, you know, that's available. And there's also much more interest, you know, there's a much higher demand that's focusing on solutions. And not only just on the, on the fiber side, but there's a tremendous amount of investment going on even in the 5G space. You know, just seeing the trenching that's going up along, you know, along the county here, a lot of that's not just for fiber, for fiber to the home. There's a lot of work going on in LTE and 5G, of which they have garnered significant revenues from AT&amp;T. As an example, one of the things that was granted in the 2019, 2020 timeframe was something called FirstNet, which was sole source to AT&amp;T to provide first responder access on dedicated cellular, so you weren't compromised, you know, in the event of a large emergency. They rolled out FirstNet, they've been the prime contractor to deploy that and service contracts for AT&amp;T. So they've got a service, they have a service revenue stream, you know, basically annuities to basically fund other operations along with installing that infrastructure for AT&amp;T. So they have other sources of revenue that they clearly even have back during the, what do they call that, bright cities or bright?
Oh, my God.
Brilliant cities, you know, during that, that pipe dream, so.
Let me make, speak to your issues. We only got two internet service providers who would provide for the whole town investment. One of them left out an important area. I don't want to mention this. So of the two, Buck Tussell, their total cost was less than what the other one wanted to charge the town.
Considerably less.
I mean, Buck Tussell, I mean, if everything goes well, it'd be no cost to us. But their total cost was less than what the other one wanted the town to contribute. And we are going to get some, we are very likely to get some awards from state government.
Well, if there's dollars like that.
Yeah, and Buck Tussell has a good record at winning these awards. So some of that will go to reduce our liability on the bond if they should fail. Also, the bond issue is there is no principal or interest the first three years, so they definitely have a revenue stream there. And then the next two years, it's interest only. And by that time, I mean, they would be up against, unless they pull back. So the risk, it seems, and I'm a belt and suspenders kind of guy, portfolio, what's it, is not that great.
I think they borrowed, they borrowed $700 million on this process in the other counties and the 23 counties?
Under 60 million of bond issues.
160.
160 million of bond issues, yeah. Two, two trenches of, they started with a 70 million and they, they did another 90 million. And they have, and they have some other counties that want to join in to that Fond du Lac pipe stream. And they're, they're looking for, you know, closer to another 100 million potentially in another round of financing they'll do this year. So, so there is a, there is a broad interest in it and they've gotten, I think, Paul, with some of his contacts in the finance world, they've got a lot of interest and a lot of credibility in the bond market relative to what they've done to date.
And these would be taxable bonds, they would not be taxes.
Yeah, one more question. On the right side of this slide, if there's maybe some clues as to what happened since 2012 in Fond du Lac, that there's the amounts up there, 13 counties or so. What's the history of this one, this case?
That's what Hugh was speaking to.
Yeah, Fond du Lac, Fond du Lac County's deployed. The, the second county that kind of went in and basically used that bond structure was Oneida. Oneida is now on their third phase of funding and deployment. And so what a lot of these very rural counties did, this is, gosh, 11 years ago now, right? So 11 years ago, people were doing fixed wireless. And so what, what Buck Tussell did is they put an infrastructure in that supported fixed wireless, but because they had that fiber infrastructure as another phase, they then are structured so they can do fiber to the home. And with this, with this funding, they primarily funded, you know, fixed wireless and made it profitable for them. And now with the state and federal funding, they're now doing, they're now doing that kind of next phase and say, great, I'm going to get rid of that fixed wireless lower performance and I'm going to bring you fiber to the home with this fiber infrastructure that I laid, you know, back eight, several years ago.
So this is apples and oranges. This site isn't directly comparable to basketball, but it gives you some, possibly some confidence in Buck Tussell, which is a great name.
It's a great name.
Yeah. Many years ago, people were wondering, why the heck did you call it Google, right? So, you know, in the 20s, it was likely a name that has a similar.
Twenty months of bug. How much money are we talking about in the millions on this?
Our cost?
Our.
Six, 6.82 million.
Is the project cost.
Is the project cost.
Right. The total funding for a bond may be in the neighborhood of about 8 million. And as, as Mr. Casrell noted, one of the other vendors, basically for that total cost that we're paying for Buck Tussell, that would have only been our share of a, of a cost of a, of a project. So it was substantially lower. So we're, we're getting a great bank for the buck. And clearly, their efficiencies for how they do design and how they do implementation, they clearly have economies of scale that are reflected in the way that they provided their bid.
Jim Barton, hopefully Glidden Drive. What is the timetable scheduled to start and finish, let's just hypothetically say, geographically from the bay to it?
Well, the, the time, they're saying they should be able to start by mid-2023, as I mentioned, and I think it was 18 months?
Yeah, 18 months.
18 months.
18-month timeframe and as, as noted by the, by the chairman, you know, when you get grants, a lot of that performance, getting the grant is to get it done within a two-year period or demonstrate substantial completion within a 24-month period. So that's, that's typically how that would go.
From the bay.
Oh, not, they may start in the middle and work their way.
I understand. Start somewhere and somewhere.
Right.
You start, and you're saying, what I'm hearing is approximately 24 months?
Or less.
Or less.
Yeah. And they're also a company that wants to do co-digging, you know, so in other words, we had some ISPs that say, no, we're going to lay our own, our own conduit and it's ours. You know, we're not interested in, in sharing any of the pipe or doing that. And they've, or, you know, as we, as the folks that live on Glidden Drive know, we just got a communication with Surgeon Bay Utilities, that they're going to be coming up from Westers up into their area. And they're going to be putting in and burying conduit for both power and for communication lines. And that's, that's an example where they might start there just because Surgeon Bay Utilities go along and they'd be willing, you know, to help fund that and make sure that we dig once, for example. And so they're very much, you know, attuned to wanting to do that. And we know you, Surgeon Bay Utilities is of the same mind. So those are the things where you may see some work just on, based on other synergies that are going on with some of the utilities in the town. And so they'll, they'll work that way to, to work smart.
We were, we had a good conversation about that. And they were just totally, that sharing was a great thing. Big ones. Gwen.
Gwen Gregory's, South Lake Road on Clark Lake. I have two questions. One is, who owns the cable? Who owns the fiber? Collateral fibers if the company goes belly up? Do you, would you have to have new fiber put in if you wanted to have another provider?
No, no, that's, that's a case, you know, as part of this project or with any project where there's cost sharing. The municipality has a lien on, on the assets, so that would basically be part of the assets that the town would have control.
And the second part of the question is, has anybody been able to talk sort of off the record to town or county members in any of their completed projects to see how things are going at three and five years down the road? Thank you.
There's a lot that's on the record. That's the wonderful thing about the internet. So you can go and look in Oneida County and you can look at some of their other finished projects to see how that's going. And you, and they have a fairly well active Facebook page. Once they go into a county or to an area, they basically assign a person and you can see a person's base with the name and a contact number as they're doing deployments. So you literally have someone that's, that's your primary contact point as you want to get services within your, within their area. And they do a very good job of, of communicating as they're, you know, going from, you know, one municipality or one part, you know, of a municipality to another as they're streaming.
No, I didn't mean in the actual construction of it, I meant.
But just performance.
Performance.
Yeah.
Two or three down, years down the road, are people satisfied?
Yes.
Are they delivering what they say they're delivering and that kind of stuff?
I think they're saying what they're, they're delivering and for folks on fixed wireless, they always, of course, they want something faster than what they're getting. But in many cases, you know, they haven't, they didn't have anything before, so they're, they're excited about that. I think where you see some of the excitement is for folks getting fiber to their, to the house for the first time. So I think they're just working through that and they've been ahead of schedule in some cases because, you know, we've had, you know, the mildness January on record. So they've been able to work through the winter months to get things going as well. They're also fairly well-known too for their Buck Tussell University. So I think one of the other things we don't want to underestimate is as we move, say, from cable or dish and satellite TV to fiber, you know, streaming and, and learning kind of new jargon or a new way to look at some of those other services is going to be new and they have extensive work. So imagine being in a rural area where no one had really internet of any kind, right? They set up education just from that as the starting point, you know, not folks that are going from, from a charter to, you know, a, a streaming service, you know, it's people that really didn't have anything at all. So they've got that kind of educational mindset and, and that's something that we're, you know, we're cognizant of because, you know, this is a transition as well for a lot of folks, right, over, over, you know, close to, you know, 72% underserved or not-served at all in our town, right? So we've got a lot of work just to help those folks bootstrap up and, and get access where they haven't had it before.
Specs are looking really good. Do they share any information on latency in the specs or?
It's fiber, so it's going to be well, typically less than 20 milliseconds typically, yeah.
Follow-up to one question, I guess, did you have an opportunity to speak to anybody in any of the served municipalities to kind of do a reference check, get their satisfaction of working with them as a provider?
I, I reached out to some, to some folks in, in Oneida County and then followed it up. If you look on, on the information for Oneida County, they had similar sorts of concerns in their county board. There's an extensive FAQ question because they had a whole issue or a series of questions about, is this too good to be true on the bonding? And so, you know, they went into it at length as well. And I think, you know, from a performance side, I think the biggest thing is, is helping people with the transition. And especially for things as mundane as a question saying, I have a landline currently because, you know, and this is an example, I have a landline because I don't have good cell service and I still have a landline with this sort of technology, right? And, and they get that from a rural perspective, right? They clearly understand AT&amp;T wireline is going away, you know, but if it breaks, AT&amp;T's not going to fix it. So to be able to talk about those solutions and especially.
And the answer, yes.
For that, you know, they, you know, you can still have a landline and it still works and it still feels like a touchstone phone. So those are the kinds of things that they'll be helpful in order to cross for deployment.
And for example, the county said, yes, they were a good partner in terms of dealing with the technology, the funding, the support, the education.
They're on, they're on phase three.
Right. We read, we read a lot of information in regard to that because, you know, it was passed, all the committee received it, and so we, we had, we read a lot.
And one of our neighbor, one of my neighbors on the drive used to be economic development for Kwani Counties. So in their early days of doing their work with Buck Tussell, that was another reference point as well.
And the finance director for Fond du Lac County had nothing but great things to say as well.
You might mention that the technology that they are employing here is not unique to them, so we're not a testbed for something. All of the vendors, with the exception of Charter, came back with the same technology so that if something were ever to occur, it's the kind of technology another company would gladly step in and assume because it's the same stuff that we would have done had we moved ahead with AT&amp;T or Bertram or anything. The only one that was a high-grade was Charter, which was a combination of cable, all right, coax cables and fiber. So everything else that we've done is all on the same technology. So we're not locking ourselves in, it's what everybody's doing and it's the future-proof sign that we were concerned about.
Again, by, you know, the Finley Engineering Board, there was so, so much information there to start with for us that, you know, this is, this is the future-proof technology, you know, on and on like that. So, you know, so you start with that as the base and, you know, you work from there and, you know, you just, you hope that you had it, you know, ISPs that were interested. And fortunately, there were, you know. And there were some that were not, so that's fine.
Did other towns in North County seek RFPs or?
No, I, we're the, to my knowledge, we were the first ones to do an RFP as, as a matter of fact, our RFP is now being offered to all other municipalities that have, are just starting this process.
Your RFP is work product for all other committees that they're utilizing, so it will be favorable to issuing it this week.
Yeah, for us, yeah, for Hugh was a huge part of that.
But for some of the other towns that have already signed up, they did not seek RFPs.
No.
We did.
Jackson Portworth went forward with their recommendation after an RFI, the request for information. And that's, you know, one of the processes that I mentioned, we did an RFI, but that wasn't enough for us. We, we felt we needed more information. We, we solidly didn't want to be, didn't want to come to you and say, you know, we, we wanted this to be solid, that we've done our work, we've done our work.
That's great.
Very nice. Thanks, Dave. Any other?
You have a question?
There you are.
Derek.
Hi, Derek.
What's that?
What's the next step for the town board?
I haven't had a slide for that. That's if, that's if I can get it to work. Wait, I should put it on to the one way again. I don't wanna, I need to go backwards. Okay, why don't we just forget?
Well, I can go back. How many?
I think I can.
Go back to next steps. There we go. Ta-da. Okay. Next steps. So the Communications Technology Committee will meet on Thursday, the twenty-sixth, to review the feedback. And then the plan is that on the twentieth of February, when with our regular town board meeting, uh, the committee will make a formal recommendation to the town at that time. Unless you wanna talk Dan into an earlier, um, special meeting date. And that's certainly something that you can encourage.
The sooner the better.
Yes.
I just wanna make-
You heard that, Mr. G.
I just wanna make sure that as a town, we are as open as possible. So that everybody in the town, this is not a surprise, what we're doing. So we wanna give everybody an opportunity to digest it, talk amongst your friends and neighbors. If there's questions or concerns, talk to the committee, let us know. You know, we approached this whole topic the same way that many of you did tonight, it's too good to be true.
Yeah.
We think we've done enough due diligence to feel that it's pretty good. We didn't talk about the take rate, but the people at Bug Tussle tell us their take rate in new areas is pretty close to ninety percent. Now, we've seen from the surveys that many didn't return, but there's not a lot of happy campers with Charter. So I would suspect that there's gonna be a fairly large ground swell of people. Then you have all the people in the interior that have nothing. This is gonna be a godsend to those who have kids in school or wanna work from home or you're running those things. So we're, we think we've got a solution that's viable. Bug Tussle thinks that they can make this thing go on forty to fifty percent take rate. So it's not something that's, you have to worry about. We also know they're gonna be extremely aggressive when they come in and they start offering this service. They want your business. There will be competition out there, so I think that's a positive. And are we banking on something? We're banking on the fact that twenty-three counties have gone and done this, that it's worked for them, that it's work in progress, that they're continuing to do it. So we're starting to build a confidence level that says, this can work for us. And rather than say, we're Bailey's Harbor and it's gonna be five million dollars to do insight and it's coming through the tax levy. Or Washington Island where it's coming through the tax levy. Or Jacksonport's one and a half or two million dollar investment they're gonna make for Frontier through the tax levy. This gives us an opportunity frankly we never thought we'd get. I was very nervous about bringing a proposal to somebody saying, hey, it's eleven million dollars over thirty years. It's not gonna be much. Well, this is a, this is a great alternative and I think it's the one that, that we wanna take and move ahead with. But we appreciate your input. If you have questions or more input, feel free to touch back with any of the town board members or the committee. We hope to make a, a recommendation, hope to authorize this at our next meeting in February, assuming nothing comes, uh, in the next few weeks, so.
And, yeah, sure.
Ted Douglas, fifty-three oh one Pine Tree Road. What keeps you awake at night about this presentation? To go bankrupt.
The only thing that kept me awake, um, for the last few nights is doing this presentation.
Great job.
You know, standing up in front of your community and saying very firmly, this is what we've done. This is what we've worked for and I could, I'm very emotional over this, believe me. Starting in twenty-twenty, when I, when I was first elected and Dan by the Sumsons put me in charge of this. It was, you know, and to, to know that these kids couldn't work, they couldn't do their schoolwork. People couldn't work from, I mean, the whole thing was a disaster. And it felt, you felt so helpless because starting at that point to try to get a PSC grant and get a tower, a couple of towers up, that wasn't gonna make a whole lot of difference, but it was something, right? So when all, when this did happen and all these dollars became available through the infrastructure bill and through the state and all that, we have this, as I said in April, a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. And we can't let it slip through our hands because we have a, we knew, I served on the Citizens Committee for Sebastopol School when we were looking into what we could do with the school. And we, you know, there were, there was, what, you know? We knew that from the, from a study that was done and the enrollment was gonna go down. Dick can speak to that, he's on the school board. So we knew the enrollment was gonna go down. So it's like, how do you justify this, people? Can we wanna tear all this down, spend twenty-five million dollars to? But, you know, if, if we want to have a thriving community, we know we invite a lot of people with colored hair like this, right? Special job, I think. So, um, so we know this, right? So, so we wanna attract young people, people that can work from home, people that have families, people that'll send their kids to Sebastopol School. It's a great school, you know? So we have this opportunity to make our community better and, and to bring, you know, maybe more business, home businesses in or whatever. You know, we, we can thrive, we can thrive.
And raise the value of our real estate.
Well, we won't, and we won't, we won't lose the value of real estate because when you, if you don't have great internet to your home, you can count on getting a whole lot less. That was, real estate used to be my gig. So, yeah, so you can work, you know, get a whole lot less. So, yeah, so no, I, I, I'm very con, I, I, maybe I'm overconfident in this or just so darn excited. I don't know what it is, but I, I just feel very strongly. And when you sit down with these people, which we did, um, in particular, these, I just got such a, they're real people. I mean, the, the Mark Dodge that we talked about, um, is from-
The compound.
O'Connell County, raised on a farm. Um, we told a few stories back and forth, you know, like regular park kids do. And we, we just had a, just that wonderful feeling of not, not, um, what is it? Just, and I hate to say warm and fuzzy, but like, like these, trust, yeah, trust. It just felt right, okay? And then by answering all their questions and be able to, you know, not blow smoke at us, give us statistical things, factual things, here's what we can do, right? Um, it just, it just felt right. And, and they backed it up with everything that Hugh talked about and, and to top it off, to be able to come to you and say, we can bond this and it's not, no tax levy? I know about you, but I can jump up and down on this one, really excited. So, yeah, no, so nothing keeps me up. Now that I'm done with this, I'm gonna sleep.
Gee?
Yeah.
Okay, so on YouTube chat, someone asked, um, hopefully this is not conditional on a grant approval, correct? So basically, it's, it's a go, no matter if you have grants or not.
Well, if the board of the, if our board approves it, then yes.
Well, that's okay. Just wanted to get whatever chat was open.
Sure.
No, that's, and that's another great point with bonding. Um, if you follow the, the town of Jacksonport, right, they made a decision to, um, to go Frontier. But, you know, that, some of that was contingent on, okay, let's wait and see how we're doing on getting grants, right? The next round of grants are, are gonna be available this February. But if you're waiting for grants, that clock's ticking, right? That's, that's by where someone else is gonna buy and install, uh, diggers you're not gonna be able to get to, to, to hang things, et cetera. Um, and I, and I think they were going back on their, to the board to say, hey, can we find another mechanism of financing? So we're not waiting and held hostage for grants. So with bonding, that's another advantage is we don't have to, we don't have to wait for that. We can go ahead and get the bonds issued, we can still go after grants and they've done that, um, in some of their examples with, with other counties. They've gotten the bonds issued, you can basically get the dollars going so they can start trenching or start boring. And then they, they still aggressively go, go after grants. So, um, so I think that's, you know, you know, we basically get the both, the best of both worlds there. Now get the money to start the project going and with their, um, their track record in getting grants from the State Public Service Commission, you know, being able to get that as another risk, you know, reduction mechanism, which is gonna probably be, I think they estimated about one point two, another one point three million dollars worth of grants that they think we're, we're eligible for.
Now, one other question I wanted to bring up. So someone mentioned over there about, um, when you guys, well, if we go to the fiber, what's included bundling and stuff like that? Um, can we bring up that one slide about the TV landline options?
Sure.
Just so they can kinda know what their options is if they choose to, you know, what they can do in the aspect.
Do you think we, do you think somebody thought about what you might ask?
Sorry.
So, somebody did. Somebody did.
So I think one of the, the things that we worry, we worry about in the town is, um, is affordability. You know, you know, whether it's, uh, someone who's sixty-plus years of age worried about, you know, fixed income or, or families that in our, our challenges with high inflation, making ends meet. So if you look at the flexibility you have with what you can do with fiber, um, using, there's just some examples, um, we put here. You know, fiber offers a whole milieu of options relative to TV and streaming and, uh, phone service. And, you know, there are just some examples there of how you can bundle or how you can mix and match. But these are additional savings, you know, for landline, you know, um, you can save, you know, seventy bucks just by now being able to reliably use your cellphone with wifi in your house, uh, which some people do with Charter, uh, uh, on the cable side. Um, you could do that and do multiple streaming and not sacrificing the performance when you're gonna have fiber. Or the fact that you could do a landline and still save, you know, forty to seventy dollars, you know, based on, you know, what AT&amp;T offers in their wireline service today. Uh, with TV, there's just a, a ton of options you have with the streaming services. And you've heard of YouTube TV and Fubo and, uh, Dire TV, uh, streaming, you know? And again, compared to, you know, what you have with, uh, with, with cable or DirecTV, um, you know, a great story, you know, Washington Island, you know, is, is lit with fiber now. And again, it's, it's not done through their town, it's done through-
Electric co-op.
It's part of the, the electric co-op. Um, and, you know, one of the testimonials is one of the residents there said she, it was the greatest day in her life 'cause he was, she was able to cancel her DirecTV subscription. And so she went from, you know, a hundred some dollars per month to basically a streaming service for sixty. So basically, you're talking, saying sixty dollars, think, think about it.
A month.
Sixty dollars a month that you're saving, seven hundred and twenty bucks a year, right? So those charges, that's kind of straight cash impact. So you can do that with phone, you can do that with TV, um, you can do your own kind of bundling, right? So there's, there's that flexibility there that our residents are gonna have to basically give them more purchasing power than they've ever had before. So I think just from the, the simple economics of making ends meet at home, um, this is something that's gonna be, I think, also very powerful for our residents, uh, and for our folks that are on fixed income. It, it's gonna be a big deal. And that's why this sort of economics plus the ability to help them transition. So I know, you know, some are, you know, they don't wanna get rid of the landline or they're worried about, you know, I, you know, I, they are used to that Charter Spectrum remote they've used for twenty-five years, you know? Some of that stuff is a, is a, is a tough transition to change, but, you know, we can do that and, and save them, you know, save them some money so that they can, uh, go to a few more fish fries.
So we just got the board, you don't need Bug Tussle.
Yes, I, 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 I've done some, we, we've done some of this just, you know, because of the bundling. We just primarily use internet. We've experimented with a different, you know, a couple, uh, different TV packages, you know? Because we still wanna watch Bucks games and Brewer games and those are the kinds of flexibility, you know, that, that you have and, and still save money. So I think, I don't want this to get lost and thank you, Derek, for bringing it up as, you know, there's, it's another way too that, you know, folks can get some substantial in-pocket savings, you know, that, that they realize once, once you get this deployed. So that's something that we can look forward to for those that are otherwise constrained with, you know, their fixed wireless solution or their-
Satellite.
Uh, internet solution, you know, which is, you know, relatively expensive.
Uh, the information from this program will be on our website. Um, as you know, we have a YouTube channel, so you could also watch it and it gets recorded now. And, um, there's also some, um, paper copies over there, um, that you can take with you. Oh, and one other thing, if you have not done the FiberNet Door County survey, we are making it really easy for you tonight. It's right there. You pick it up, you can either fill it out while you're here and give it to Miss Amy or give it to Jess. Better yet, give it to Jess. Um, you know, or you could drop it off or whatever. But if you haven't, more, more data is not a bad thing, okay? So, so if you haven't or if some of your neighbors haven't, please have them do it. Cause every one we can get, especially showing unserved and underserved, is just a plus for us to get a grant. Okay? Yeah.
Markane Matthew Road, why Bug Tussle now and not two years ago? You guys were very against them two years ago.
I think we kinda hit on that.
Well, not just be, not, even the company, it's the same company.
Yeah.
Like, I mean, I, I was surprised when Bug Tussle came up tonight.
Um, well, at the time, we were looking at Door County Broadband, which we considered local, and Bug Tussle, okay? Um, they were gonna do similar things, but the, I, if I remember correctly, uh, remember this was also new for everybody, okay? This whole, the whole thing starting in a panic of, oh my God, we're in a pandemic, you know? So I think we looked at the two and for-
Wireless was the, wireless was the primary-
That's all it was.
And towers.
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 And so-
Yeah.
Their business model changed and they found a way to run their base and-
And Hugh, Hugh hit on that, you know?
Become a reliable architecture force.
For all the, you know, dollars change, all the, the infrastructure money, right? All that, it makes it, a lot of companies jumping on, you know, doing fiber. So for them to expand the base that they had already, as Hugh said, with the, with the towers, with, you know, wireless, and then to expand into fiber to the home is not, you know, it's just a step, right?
And I would speak to one of the reasons why I had an issue back then is because looking at the technology they used back then, it was pretty much on the same frequency as Door County Broadband, where they wanted to place the towers were literally within miles from where existing Door County Broadband towers would be. And we were concerned of interference and causing degradation of what, what, what we already had to what we were trying to accomplish. So that was kind of another-
It was all-
-reason why we decided not to go that route.
You know, it's, it seems like, yeah, it's just two years ago.
But actually, I don't know.
But, you know, yeah, three and a half.
It's twenty nineteen.
Right.
Okay.
But when you, when you look at, when you look at it, look at how, look at how far everything's come in a few years, right? So, yeah.
I would also add too, one of the big challenges when you look at some of the work that Bug Tussle's doing in some of the counties, some of the things that are constraints for them, um, and we, we've experienced it here in the county. It's this whole notion of where can they put a tower, right? And a lot of that tower work has to go on, on private land, which is not enough public land to put towers. So that's, you know, one of the biggest impediments that they face is, you know, getting easements, you know, you know, from, from private parties, you know, getting all that's, all that subtle and that, you know, takes, takes time as Jess knows from having worked with Door County Broadband. So that really makes a challenge and I think that's what, why this is so nice in that regard, Mark, is this is all fiber, it's all buried, it's all trenched, it's all board. You don't have to worry about any of that at all because they can primarily just go through, uh, town right-ofways in the roads and, um, you know, or county roads, which we're able to do already. And the biggest thing is gonna be them just getting permission from, from the property owners and-
Well, I'll say something, Hugh. I was against the Door County Broadband when we, when we voted on it.
Is, is the committee's job done when they make the, the presentation?
Lord, rich.
They all get shovels.
But the liaison work basically and that type of thing.
Oh, there's-
Yeah, there's getting, there's things called a committee.
Yeah, the communications is from the committee, right? Now whether the same member will be, that's an issue, but there is a standing committee and that, the other is a firm.
So we still have to get an agreement, right?
Yeah.
Uh, we're still gonna actively work to, to get grants, so that means we'll be reaching out to you to get, you know, uh, letters of support. Whether it's from school board members, whether it's from teachers, whether it's from families that can tell their experiences, business- that can tell their experiences, businesses, you know, that will benefit from it. Those are all things that the committee's still going to be active in doing. You know, I, I kind of, you know, I'll be starting that because we've got, you know, a gentleman in the back who serves with me on the County Broadband Committee, you know, and they're going to be stringing conduit in non-glit drive. And so we want to make sure that we can leverage that so, so we can, so we can.
First Jason helped serve the utilities.
Serve the utilities, so we can dig once. Also, I also serve on the Public Safety and Judiciary Committee. The county has made a recommendation for their next generation land mobile radio, which is a digital technology. And as part of that, they're going to have to string some more towers in order for that technology to reach every nook and cranny and crevice and bluff and, and, yeah, especially Sebastopol. They shore drive area and the tall trees along the lake. And so they've got a couple of towers that they want to put in Sebastopol. So one of the things we're going to be doing is sharing the plan with, with Bug Tussle with the county. Because again, the county doesn't want to have to dig its own conduit and put that in and install it. So, you know, on behalf of all of us as taxpayers of the county, we want to make sure, you know, they can only, they just have to dig once. So those are things, again, that offset project costs and allow us, again, to work smarter. So those are all things as part of this committee, we'll work collectively to make sure we do it and do it cost effectively for everybody.
Yeah, Tom.
Kind of silly question, but suppose you have a section, you know, a square mile section, it's got paved roads all the way around it, and there's one residence, you know, right in the middle of one of those four sections. Is that going to be trenched as a trunk line?
Well, we'll leave it up to them for design.
It's their design.
And again, one of the things that they're doing from a design perspective is they're doing it with growth in mind. So, you know, we have twenty-one sixty-five E-nine-one addresses. There's not, there aren't houses or businesses in all of those, right? And so part of their design is to look at where things may go in the future, right? So they'll design their infrastructure so that they can expand it. That's one of the things we really didn't talk about. They have what they call dark fibers. So those are fibers that aren't really used, but they can be lit, you know, hence the term dark, right? But they'll light the fibers up as the town leads it from an expansion perspective. So they'll, they'll have that in line, well, from a design perspective.
So you might need to pay for the, all but the first two hundred feet, you might need to pay for the whole trench.
I think, I think there's going to be some situations like that where you have multiple folks on a private road, right? They'll, they'll do that in a, in a cost-effective way that, that's, that's, that's fair to everybody. And I, I think those are things that, you know, we might get involved with as, as a committee and make sure we can do that that's cost effective for everyone. Any other questions?
Any? Well, then I say thank you so much.